Good evening, everyone. And thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for squeezing into this small room. We've kind of moved for the sake of being able to livestream and have more space. But a person that does all that is not here with us right now. So we're here so that we can... It is going to be... Our meeting is going to be videotaped. It's not livestreamed, but it will be brought up tomorrow. It'll be uploaded tomorrow. So we can start tonight's meeting by standing for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we can start tonight's meeting by moving into 3.1, the junior high midterm community building.
Is it okay if I stand over here? Okay, and then my kiddos went. We'll just come right over here, okay?
Perfect.
Okay, all right. So good evening, everyone, and welcome. We had a unique opportunity during midterms. Generally, in midterm week, our junior high students, they take their test and they go home. And we wanted to do something different this year. So our goal was to engage students in enrichment and community-building activities by building positive relationships amongst their peers. And so what they would do... I'm going to go back and forth. So this gives you an idea of what their day looked like. So they would take an exam in the morning. They would come in, they would have their breakfast, and then they would do an exam. And then after their exam, they would have a structured activity. And we had community partners come in from Reliant, and I'll go through the list. We had a gentleman come from a martial arts... How long did you say it was?
Studio.
Studio, thank you. Martial arts studio, thank you. We did games, board games. We made bracelets. And it was great. A lot of the kids didn't even want to go to lunch because they were so engaged in the board games, which I thought was wonderful. So then they would have lunch. Then they would do another structured activity break. They would have an exam, and then they would go home. And we did that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And then on Friday, everyone in the district had a happy day. So we had their exam in the morning. We did a structured activity break. And then students were home at 10:30 and had a bag lunch to go home. So our community partners... These are all the wonderful people who came in and worked with our students. So Reliant, Wayne CAP, the Space Martial Arts, Delphi Rise, the Council of Alcoholism and Addictions in the Finger Lakes, Family Counseling Services. We had our Wayne community partners. And a lot of those people are already in our building. So Delphi is in our building. We have Jackie Pedding. We have Tammy Field, Bale Fanning. A lot of these people you already know and love. They're already in our building. And they just brought other people in, like from Reliant, Peaceful Schools, Steady Work, the Wayne County Sheriff's Department. And then we also had two SODA seniors come in and work with our kids, Jessica Curtis and Sadie Van Dyne. And so they did a bunch of really fun activities. Board games, like I talked about. Bracelet making, even the boys engaged in the bracelet making, which I thought was cool. Martial arts, mindfulness. They did some community circles. Reliant talked about financial literacy and budgeting. They did team-building activities. And they also did some trivia. So I have Gunner Johnson, Jackson Diver, and Morgan Eastly. I'm going to invite them to come up and talk a little bit about what their favorite activity was and why.
I really liked all the activities. My favorite one was the martial arts because it brought back many memories when I did do karate. And all of them were very fun. And they brought back so many memories when I was young and everything. And it just had my mind off all the tests and I got relaxed. And it just gave me a break and everything. Thank you.
So my favorite activity definitely was the building of the marshmallow towers, mainly because it helped me connect with most of the other students that I don't really talk to or get to know. And it helped me work basically on my team-building skills.
My favorite activity was doing the martial arts because I got to see my old instructor again. I got to show people what I learned over the six months that I did karate.
Thank you, guys. And I didn't coach them, by the way. Thank you, guys, very much. I appreciate you. So Friday afternoon... Or Friday morning after their test, our activity was a keynote speaker, Braxton Guy. And he gave a keynote speech on embracing others and showing empathy towards each other, towards our teachers, towards each other as students, people in the community, you know, walking a mile in each other's shoes. So we look forward to doing this again during final exams and making this a part of the junior, senior high culture moving forward. In June, we can take them outside. It's nice. Hi, Ray. Come on in. Just in time. So this is Raymond Taubson. He's one of our students. Come on, Ray. Let's give Raymond a hug. Okay, all right. So you want to tell the folks what your favorite part of our midterm week was? Your favorite activity and why?
My favorite activity was probably the karate one. Because I learned how to do karate, and it was my first time.
Do you think you'll try it again?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I think I'm bringing back karate. Thank you, Ray. Thank you. So do the board or the community have any questions for me or students?
I got something for coming in. The important thing is, is remember, you can't do karate on any of your teachers, okay? That means you...
Hey, guys. Yeah, let's have a picture. All right? All right, let's get in between Mr. Price. Mr. Price, you want to go down a little bit more? There you go. All right, some of these kids are taller than me. I don't know. I don't know. Come on, girl. All right, I'll stand to the side. All right. Mr. Price, can you go down that way a little bit?
Yeah, we'll squeeze in.
All right, we'll squeeze in. Okay. All right, there we go.
A little smile. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, guys. So now I'm going to transition us to our data. Are you ready?
For any of our families that came, you're welcome to stay. But, you know, if you have other things to do, you know, you're certainly welcome to go whenever you want. Totally up to you. I just don't want you to feel like you have to stay.
You have to say to I-Ready. Are you ready? Good, Mr. President?
We're good, lots.
Okay. All right. So we're going to transition over to our mid-year I-Ready data presentation. The principals are I. We are comparing the beginning of the year data to the mid-year data that the students took during the term. Okay? So what you see on this screen is our overall reading for seventh and eighth grade. So overall, I'm pleased to present that our students have made some growth in both reading and math since the beginning of the school year. Our goal is to move students into the green and move students from the red areas into the yellow so that students' math and reading skills get closer to achieving grade-level standards. So the green... The green with the shaded for everyone who doesn't know. Okay, so I'm just going to go over this. So this is mid or above grade level. This is early on grade level. One, the yellow is one grade level below. This is two grade levels below. And the shaded red is three or more grade levels below. Okay? So that is consistent on all the graphs that you will see, those shadings, those colors, what they mean, right? So at the beginning of the school year, 25% or 40 students were scoring on or above grade level. At the mid-year mark, we have increased that percentage to 34%, or 54 students. And this equates to 14 more students working on or above grade level. When we look at the yellow portions of the graph, our goal is to push these students into the green and pull those students out of the red, which we are making small gains in doing. The students in the red, like I said before, are two to three grade levels below where they should be. At the beginning of the school year, 60% or 96 students in grades seven and eight fell in this range. This has decreased to 50% for 80 students, which equates to 16 students who have either moved into the solid red or have moved into the yellow portions of the graph. This is not where we want to be at all. But we're moving in the right direction to see a decrease in the number of students. The I-Ready revealed that the biggest skill deficit that our students are having is comprehension of informational text and vocabulary skills when it comes to our reading. So when we look at the seventh and eighth grade as individuals, in the seventh grade, 80 out of 84 students were assessed. Students on or above grade level increased by 9%. There was an 8% decrease in students' two to three grade levels below where they should be. So we want to increase the green, decrease the red, which is what we're doing. And in eighth grade, 79 out of 80 students were assessed... Students on or above grade level increased by 9%. And there was a 16% decrease in students' two to three grade levels below where they should be. So this graph here, you're going to see this with the other principals. So if you're going across, this is historic, right? So the 23, 24 students in grade eight, this is this current class right here, okay? So this is their predecessors, the current ninth graders, their predecessors, the current 10th graders, their predecessors, the current 11th graders, and their predecessors, the current 12th graders. Okay, so that's historic. So when we go this way, this is the actual... This is the eighth grade across the years. So 37% this year, 39% last year. And that's on or above grade level. And then in 21, 22, 32% on or above grade level. And then this grade represents the COVID year, where kids took their assessments at home, okay? So, and then 19, 20 is the year prior to COVID, the year prior to shutdown, all right? So we're going to talk about this. And you'll see that for reading and math for every principal that presents. So in seventh grade, when you look at the cohort, their reading level has increased since 2021 from 27 to 31% on or above grade level. And when you look at the grade level historically, they've increased from 26 to 39%. In eighth grade, historically speaking, the current eighth grade has scored the best compared to their previous cohorts. However, when you look at them as a cohort individually, they fluctuate between 2% to 7% in the last three years. Overall, what we have been doing as opposed to previous years, we're looking at completed lessons, completed past lessons, not the number of minutes they put in. Previous homework assignments were 20 to 30 minutes a night. We're looking at two past lessons a week for math and ELA. So if they don't pass it, they have to retake it until they pass it. And if we see a kid who keeps continually struggling with the same lesson, we can adjust it to help them. So that's a conversation with the student and the teacher so that we can adjust their lesson so that it's not at their frustration level and they don't give up. That's the beauty of the program, okay? So when we get to the math... So at the beginning of the school year, 23% or 37 students were on or above grade level in math. By the mid-year mark, we've increased this percentage to 34% or 54 students. And this is 17 more kids on or above grade level than where we were at the beginning of the school year, working in math. In the red, as I said before, two to three grade levels below is where they... That's where the red says. So this red here, two levels below, three or more levels below, okay? So statistically speaking, there hasn't been much movement that, as I would like to see, in the teachers. We're moving... We're doing a good job moving the students from the yellow to the green, but we're looking... We're stagnant moving the kids from the red to the yellow, which is what we want to do. And looking a little bit more closely at where kids struggle the most in seventh and eighth grade is their algebraic thinking and their geometry skills, which they're going to need for higher-level math classes. And I'm going to talk more about what we're going to do about it, okay? So if we look at the comparison of seventh and eighth grade, in seventh grade, 79 out of 84 students were assessed. Students on or above grade level increased by 9%. And there was a 3% decrease in students' two or three years below grade level. We want that to be even lower. In eighth grade, all 80 students were assessed. Students on or above grade level increased by 10%. And there was a 4% decrease in the students in the red, which is not where we want to be. We want to have that red much lower and that green much higher. So then here's the math again, okay? So remember, if we're going horizontally across, that's historical data, okay? If we're going diagonally... So if this is my seventh grade right now, this was them last year. This was them the year before. This was them during COVID. And this was them the year prior to COVID, okay? So in looking at our seventh graders, they've maintained their skill levels, okay? The 35%, they haven't moved. Would I like to see them move higher? Absolutely, I would. When we're looking at the eighth grade, they fluctuate between 6% to 9% in percentage points. We want them increasing that on or above grade level math. So here's our next steps. So I want to highlight some of the things that we've been doing most recently. So the administration has been going in and pushing in to seventh and eighth grade English and math classes and supporting the teachers in doing goal-setting, individual goal-setting. So we print out the kids' reports. We show them where they're at. We show them what they're struggling with. We show them the why behind I-Ready. Because historically, and many of you have children, right, who have gone through seventh and eighth grade, and they, once they hit middle school, it's not... They're not a fan of I-Ready. But once they figure out the why behind it, to help them to get to grade-level skills so they can be successful in those regions' classes. Because what we're seeing overall in the regions' classes and what we've seen in the seventh and eighth grade testing in the midterms is exactly the same. They're not reading for information. They're reading too quickly, making too quick decisions, not going back, reading what the question had asked of them, and also the lack of vocabulary. They're struggling with understanding grade-level vocabulary, okay? So we're pushing in, reinforcing those skills, talking to them about themselves as an individual, right? Not as a whole group, which I think is very important. What we've done is, in study halls and academic intervention services, we mandate 20 minutes of I-Ready work. And so what that looks like in the AIS, we're really blessed to have our reading teacher go into the English AIS classrooms. And so they'll divide and conquer. So four kids will be with the reading teacher, working on vocabulary, reading comprehension. The other teacher will help them with their I-Ready, and they'll flip-flop for that 40 minutes, okay? We don't have a lot of students in study halls. I don't like kids being in study halls. I'd rather have them immersed in our music technology. But if they have a study hall, they are to be on their I-Ready as soon as they walk in. It's kind of their warm-up for study hall. Get their I-Ready done, and then they can sign out to go to a teacher. If they're academically eligible, they can go to the library if they choose to, okay? And again, we're working on our targeted math and literacy interventions. One thing that we're going to continue to do is have our reading teacher push into those AIS classes and divide and conquer. Any questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
What's AIS?
Academic Intervention Services. So what we do to choose students for this support, we don't just look at I-Ready. We look at multiple data points. We look at their I-Ready. We look at their state assessment data. We look at their classroom performance. We have individual conversations with students and their parents to make sure everybody's on board. And we have conversations with the teachers, too. And then the teachers, they're not stuck there the whole time. They earn their way out of it. If they're making progress and they're doing well with their I-Ready and they're doing well in their classroom, they can earn their way out of that support.
Okay. Another question. Why are you opposed to the study hall?
Oh.
I get the whole immersion thing.
Tina. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
You're more welcome to answer this question. But just going forward, if you have... If you do have any general questions and you'd like to address, just do so during public session. Because generally, the way that presentations work, and I understand and I appreciate your questions, because generally, the way that presentations work, is they're directed towards the board. And the public would generally speak during public sessions with any questions, and then it would go back. Otherwise, we could go back and forth for that reason only. It just helps move the meeting along and keep things...
Because typically, if you had any questions of the principal, you can feel free to reach right out to Dr. Pease directly if she sees you have any questions.
But I'm more than happy to answer this question.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I didn't mean to... I was going to ask you the same question she was asking.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to study halls. I would just prefer students engaged in tech classes, like broadening their horizons to learn a skill that they may not, you know, think that they're good at, but try it, right? And we have students who have mandated classes. Our seventh and eighth graders must take tech, health, home and careers, art class, those types of things. And if their schedule allows for that, they have a study hall. But they have mandated courses by the state that they must have. When they get to high school, that's when it gets a little looser. And I would prefer high school students engaged in courses. We don't allow our high schoolers to have more than one study hall a day.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Tina, do we have to have a study hall?
Do we have... I'm sorry?
Do we have to have a study hall? Why not just get rid of the study halls? And you know how that works? They have nowhere to go, because then there's no rush?
If there is... Depending on where this... How this schedule is, right? So we have seniors, if they are able to... If their schedule aligns, then we have them do work release where they can go and/or get a job. And that's a senior privilege. Sometimes the schedule, the way their credits are... We try to front-load their credits as much as possible and work with the kids to get them... Push them into things that they may not normally... So like Tina Peet's in high school would normally take wood shop. But you know what? If my counselor said, "Hey, you might like it. It might be some good skills for you to learn." That's what we want. We want our kids, when they leave us, to be ready and experience things and try things they may not... And this is a safe environment to try things because once they go out there, then they're paying money for a college course that they, you know, may or may not do so well at.
So is it a staffing issue?
I don't think it's a staffing issue. I mean, this is high schools all over across the country. There's study halls. You know, I don't know if... I'd like to bring in more electives eventually. Honestly, between you and me, I'd love to bring in TV broadcasting course, some other courses eventually, just to broaden kids' horizons.
Because from my personal experience with my three kids, I don't want them idling and not doing anything.
And that's why we prefer to have them busy. Yes. I don't want idle hands. Yes. If all possible. Did I answer a question?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right. But my vision moving forward is we're... We have a technology lab coming in, a multimillion-dollar technology lab from a grant. My vision would be for every kid in the high school to graduate with an associate and a high school diploma, if we could do it. Per for you.
It's just this one?
Yeah, distance learning and doing some other things. But thank you for your time. Oh, yes.
So with the... Now, correct me anywhere. So like with math, per se... I know that like when you're teaching math or whatever teacher, it doesn't matter if you're teaching algebra, it could be any grade level, that you have to keep a certain pace with what you're doing, right? You have to hit this lesson. You've got to keep going all the way through. Now, with your plans here, it looks like you have measures in place, like having AIS and stuff like that come in. Do you find that you have... Is that enough? Does that really work to catch the students up that are missing each lesson? Because sometimes you don't have the time to keep the pace... You don't have the time to teach mastery and keep the pace of each lesson in order to get everything you're supposed to have.
So students who need that individualized support, we have the ability to remove them from electives to provide them with that support.
Every student?
Every student.
It's a middle school schedule. It's so tight because there's so many requirements. So especially if you have a student who might be interested in math required, that takes up another period of the day. So sometimes with the kids that need the extra support because there's so many requirements, you have to make some choices about, you know, where they're going to go. And then if it's, you know, a special education student, they might need, you know, a learning lab to meet their IEP goals. So eventually, what happens is you run out of periods in the day that you have to work with. So then you have to make some choices with the kids about the types of supports. You know, because you could have a student that... If you take a look at the... The schedule's a nine-period day. One of those is lunch. So you really have eight instructional periods to work with, right? So you've got ELA, English, social studies, math, Spanish. So you've got five of the eight already. You know, then you've got... Depending on your grade level, you've got art, you've got tech, you've got music. You might have band choir. You might have reading. You might have math intervention. You might have learning lab. Eventually, it's just...
You run out of time.
Especially in seventh and eighth grade. As Tina said, when you get to ninth grade, you have some more choices. So you have to have 22 credits to graduate from high school, you know? So basically, you know, you're looking at five and a half each year to meet the minimum requirement. So some of the push and pull that Tina gets is when you get to be the senior level. You know, basically, the senior level, all you really have to take if you've had a pretty good sequence before is you've got to take economics government, which is one period, English, which is another. And then you have to take the research methods, which is just a quarter of a credit, which isn't much, and then PE. So that's the only requirement. So then, then you end up...
Very few of our seniors though have a schedule like that.
They don't. But that's a... And I'm not saying they do.
Yeah, yeah.
But the issue is, is that they've already met pretty much the 22 credits. So then you're with kids that, well, what do you mean? I got to take a tech class. I don't want to take a tech class. I've already met my requirements to graduate. So then it's trying to, you know, to figure out, you know, what classes you might be able to put them in by then.
That's when we get creative.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, because we definitely don't want those idle hands. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so on to the intermediate school data. So in the intermediate school, we'll start with reading for the overall fourth through sixth building. So at the beginning of the year, I Ready diagnostic testing in the dark and diagonal red. So those students that are two to three or more grade levels below, we have, sorry about that. We have forty-nine percent of our students who were two to three or more grade levels below that has moved down mid-year to thirty-four percent of our students. And then if we take a look at the green and the diagonal green, at the beginning of the year, twenty-two percent of our students, four through six, were on or above grade level. And we have moved that up to thirty-one percent of our students being on or above grade level for the entire building. If we break it down to the different grade levels, we're taking a look at fourth grade. In the very beginning of the year for the diagnostic, we had thirty-four percent of our students who were two to three or more grade levels below, we've moved that down to twenty-one percent. And then if you take a look at the on or above grade level students, that went from nineteen percent at the beginning of the year and doubled to thirty-eight percent on, um, the mid-year diagnostic. If we take a look at fifth grade, again, for the students that are two to three or more grade levels below, they went from fifty-seven percent of that cohort being, um, in the red to thirty-nine percent of them being in the red. And then if you take a look at the students that are reading on or above grade level, nineteen percent of them were at the beginning of the year. And then at this point in the year, I Ready is showing us that twenty-five percent of them are reading on or above grade level. And then at grade six, they went down from fifty-four percent of students in the red for the beginning of the year diagnostic, down to forty-one percent of students at this point. And then from twenty-seven percent of students being on or above grade level at the beginning of the year in sixth grade to twenty-nine percent at this point being on or above. We take a look at our math data for the entire school. So for the whole school, we had forty percent of our students were in the red at two to three or more grade levels below. We have decreased that to be twenty-five percent of students at the mid-year diagnostic. For the, again, this is for the entire school. And then if you take a look at the green, which is the on or above grade level for math, at the beginning of the year, we had eighteen percent of the school. We have doubled that to be thirty-six percent of the school is on or above grade level in math, according to I Ready. And then again, as we just said for reading, if we break down the three grade levels, if we take a look at fourth grade, they went from the dark red being thirty-five percent down to twenty percent of students. And the students who are on or above grade level in fourth at the beginning of the year went from thirteen percent and more than doubled to thirty percent. Grade five went from forty percent of their students being two to three or more grade levels below in math, um, down to nineteen percent of those students. And then they also went from fifteen percent being on or above grade level in math to thirty-seven percent. So again, any more than we're able to double. And then grade six brought their below grade level students from forty-four percent to thirty-four percent. And then their on or above grade level students in math went from twenty-four percent to thirty-nine percent. Now, much like Tina did, if we take a look at our historical data, so for reading, if we're taking a look across our three grade levels, um, if we take a look at fourth grade, they have last year, our fourth graders were at thirty-two percent at this point in the school year that were on or above grade level, at thirty-eight percent this year. If we take a look at our sixth graders, twenty-six percent were on last year, twenty-nine percent this year. And if we take a look at our fifth graders, you will notice that last year at this time of year, thirty-five percent of fifth graders were showing, according to I Ready, of being on or above grade level in reading. And this year it's twenty-five percent. So obviously, when we see a number going down like that, we know that we need to dig into the data some more. One of the things that we do at the intermediate school, and it looks a little bit different in each school, but we engage in what are called data days. So each of the grade levels gets together with the department, so the people who teach the like. So my math teachers get together, my reading teachers get together. And we really take a look and dive into not just the I Ready data because it is one data point. So we want to look at multiple data points if we're really trying to get a picture of the whole child. And so one of the things that we looked at this year was, we are really trying to focus on the fact that our district, three through eight this year, will be doing computer-based testing. This will be the first year that all of those grade levels will be doing their state assessments on the computer. So we wanted to look and see, how can we engage students in an assessment that is parallel to what they will be doing in the spring? And we call them a parallel assessment. So essentially what we do is we engage student in a mini-state test. We don't want to take two to three to four days to do it. So we take one day where they get some of the multiple choice type questions from released state exams. They'll get a writing component to it. And that's really important because I Ready diagnostic does not give a writing component. It is all, you know, they're, they're clicking on the answer. And unfortunately, some students do just click, um, because, you know, and, and we dig into that data too and see if we need them to retake it, if it looks like they rushed through it, I Ready flags it. But we've really gone to give them an experience that would be perhaps more of a predictor of how they might do on the state exam and really give them the experience, authentic experience of taking those tests on the computer. So when I went back into a program that we call, that is called E Doc Trina. So E Doc Trina allows the teachers to go in and to choose released state test questions and put them into a format that is very similar to the computer-based testing and the Questar system that we'll be using. So when we look specifically at fifth grade, if we looked at that assessment, that parallel assessment that they gave, we had, if we look at proficiency, so sixty-five and over, sixty-nine percent of our fifth grade students passed a parallel assessment with proficiency. We break it down even more to be eighty percent and above. Forty-five percent of our fifth grade students, um, passed with an eighty or eighty plus, excuse me. And then if we broke it down even more to ninety plus, twenty percent of our students were able to get a ninety or above on a parallel assessment. And so one of the things that we have tried to do this year to really prepare our students for the experience of the computer-based testing, because although kids are on computers and devices all the time, taking a math or a E L A test on the computer or a science test if you're in fifth and eighth grade, is a completely different beast. We've done some field testing and some, um, some simulations of that. But we want to make sure that constantly our students are practicing and able to use the tools. We don't want to get to, say, the reading, you know, the E L A or the math test and they flounder because they don't know how to manipulate the tools that are on the screen for them. We don't want that to be a barrier for them. And so we have put more focus on to those, um, the assessments on E Doc Trina as well as doing, um, the R C came out with essentially test samplers that also look like the computer-based testing. We have put more of a focus on that, um, over the I Ready. Our students do engage in I Ready lessons, but we're trying to be very cognizant of the amount of time that they're on screens, especially at school. If we take a look at our math, um, if we are taking a look at, you know, our data going across, um, you will see that, that fourth did go, they went from twenty-sixth, then to thirty-one, then to thirty. Um, the other grade levels are going up. If you take a look at the cohort data, like Tina was, oh, I just turned it off, sorry. I thought maybe it would be a red pointer. Um, if you take a look at the cohort data, um, you can see that our current fourth graders, when they were in third grade last year, at this point of the year, sixteen percent were on or above grade level in math. Now it's at thirty percent. We take a look at our, um, last year's fourth graders, which are the current fifth graders, they've gone from thirty-one to thirty-seven percent on or above grade level in math. And then if we take a look at our current sixth graders, which would have been last year's fifth graders, they've gone from thirty-one to thirty-nine percent on or above grade level in math. So our next steps, and again, you can read these, so I'm going to highlight just a few of them. So we, um, I mentioned it a little bit, we continue to have both grade level data meetings as well as individual data discussions with teachers because we really want to make sure that we know exactly what is happening with every single student. It's really important that we look and see what kind of, um, story their data tells, looking at multiple measures of data. We also are noticing that a lot of the things that used to be like tier two and tier three instruction. So for example, handwriting. Several years ago, you might have had two or three kids in your classroom that struggled with, you know, their handwriting being legible and things like that. We're noticing that that's becoming more and more students. And so how can we support that tier one whole classroom instruction when we're noticing that some of the things that used to really just affect a few kids in a class are affecting, you know, the vast majority of the class? And then also, I really want to point out, again, of course, we're continuing to implement our Eureka Math Square program at all of the grade levels that is also supported within our interventions. And then our E L A and reading teachers are all engaging in a book study on a research-based book called Shifting the Balance. We've talked some about the science of reading at past board meetings and how we are shifting to that mindset. So this is actually helping educators to shift their instruction so that all students can be, can become and continue to be strong readers. Any questions?
I got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
When we're talking about being on or above grade level.
Yes.
We're using, obviously, some kind of method to measure that, right? So when you're comparing the students from previous years and you're saying that they've improved, you know, from previous years, what is that like? The two grade levels are different, right? So we're not really comparing what's on grade level for fifth grade is going to be different than what's on grade level for sixth grade.
Right. So what you're saying is that like if you're in fourth grade, then you would have expected to be at a fourth grade reading level? And if you're in sixth grade, you would be expected to be on sixth grade reading, reading level or above, correct?
So we're not really comparing apples to apples because it's a different comparison.
It's definitely a different level, but I Ready, if we're looking, you know, at I Ready, it is showing us where the student is expected to be at that point, you know, at their age, at the grade level that they're at. And so what it helps us to do is to see, is that student on a trajectory to continue to make the growth that they have been making? Are they not making the expected growth that we would, well, expect them to in order to continue to be on or above grade level or get there? And then we're able to put into place some of those more intensive interventions for those students who aren't necessarily, uh, making as much growth that as we would expect.
Also, I was looking at some, some of the numbers in this, that, that graph.
Yeah.
So when you add up those numbers and then you add up the students that are, that are enrolled, there's, there's some numbers missing that, for, for your building, for example, there's ten kids that are not included.
Yeah, so.
For, for Tina's the same thing. So do, do some kids not test?
So what happens is when you're doing the comparison data, um, sometimes students are with us at the beginning of the school year and they take the district's beginning of the year diagnostic and they leave before the, the mid-year diagnostic. Or the opposite, they might have been with, with us for the beginning of the year diagnostic and then they are for the mid-year. I Ready counts all of those as a person. So for example, if, you know, student A came to us and was here in September and October, they took the first diagnostic, their number is still incorporated into that, you know, maybe eighty out of eighty-four students, for example. They're one of that four that could have tested for the second diagnostic because they're not with us.
Or if they were here, um, if they were not here at the beginning of the year and, but they showed up for the mid-year, I Ready won't pull them because there's nothing to compare it to.
Okay, because that, that takes both of those, those scores into consideration.
Well, how, what I'm looking at, I guess, we, we post this every month, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So if I'm looking, these tests were taken in January.
Yes.
So if I look at the January numbers and, for your building, for example, two hundred and thirty lost students. Only two hundred and twenty-one took the I Ready test in January. So if you had some kids enrolled, but they weren't tested, and that's what I'm asking. Is it, is it, how do you lose, for example, for your building, it was ten kids for your building who were hired, is?
So some of them might have had to have been, to do with that. We also do unfortunately occasionally have students who might be out on, you know, who enrolled in our school but might be out on an extended leave or whatever that may look like. It could be a medical leave, it could be a long-term suspension. Most of our students do come into the building during that time. However, we do have some that, you know, might be home tutored and things like that. And then we are, are kind of at the mercy of the, the family if they're able to get them to engage in or not.
Would I also be correct to assume that two hundred and twenty-one today may be a different two hundred and twenty-one students next month? Just like, I want anyone else to have this.
Right.
I didn't know those.
No, I just, I'm where you were asking.
Yeah, we have a lot of migrant students that are here at the beginning or not here at the end. It's always kind of true.
That makes sense, I, I wouldn't.
The just the numbers didn't add up.
I know, and, and we, you know, that's, it's frustrating to us too when it doesn't. And unfortunately, sometimes we're at the mercy of the program and the way that it's pulled the data. Anyone else from the board have a question? All right. Excellent. All right, so I'm anchoring this tonight. Um, so the elementary school data, um, as we begin to look at this, uh, we started off the beginning of the year with twelve percent on or at grade level for E L A, um, and we've gotten that up to forty-one percent. It's progress that we're continuing to make. Um, and we're very happy to see that the number of students that were in the red at the beginning of the year has gone down from sixty-eight students to thirty-four, which is a decrease from twenty-five percent to twelve percent. So we've cut that number in half as we've progressed through the year. Um, just to add a sign up to a little bit with that testing, they have to have both diagnostics or it will not read their data. So just to add up to Tina and Megan. So as we begin to look at the grade, individual grade level data as we go through, um, we did talk about the F M P scores last month. And so we need to remember that I Ready is just one data point that we're using. We're really trying to look at the whole child and through the multiple measures that we do. So whether that's the Hagerty Benchmark Phonics, F M P, and I Ready. So this is just one leg of that stool that really shows us that whole child and what we're looking at. Um, so, you know, we continue to, um, use I Ready, but our kids have not been on it as much as they have in years past. Um, we've got a lot of new programming that we're implementing with fidelity. And that's been our big push to make sure that we have that direct phonics time with benchmark phonics that we're having that funding with awareness component in our younger grade levels in addition to the new math program as well. So we're really, um, while we're still using it, we're not using it as much as we have in years past just to make sure that we're getting in those key components of our curriculum. So as we look at this data, we're able to see that, um, in kindergarten, we've gone from twelve percent in the green up to fifty-seven percent. And just to remember that in kindergarten, there's really no red yet because they're not below grade level because kindergarten is that first level that they measure at. So they don't measure at the pre-K level. So that's why kindergarten has no red at this time of the year. Um, and then we go to first grade, we're down from thirty-seven percent and we've fallen to twenty percent right now in the red. So we're continuing to chip away at that and make that progress. And again, just to remember that first grade is that biggest growing year for reading and instruction where they make the most progress. And then in second grade, um, I'm sorry, you went down from, I just spoke. Um, in first grade, we went down from twelve percent to four percent in red. Uh, second grade went from thirty-seven percent to twenty-seven, twenty percent in the red. And then third grade is down from thirty-five percent to twenty-one percent in the red as we continue to make those gains. So when we're looking at our math data, um, we all know that as a district, math is an area we've been worried about. Um, we looked at the data last year in the spring, we looked at the regions data, and that was why we were looking for a new math curriculum to really make sure that we were doing what was best for our kids. We wanted a spiral curriculum. We wanted something that had common language and common expectations. And we've implemented that with Eureka Math Square. Um, and that program goes through P K through sixth grade. And as we're implementing it, like I said earlier, we're implementing it with fidelity. There's a lot to this program. There's four key components of the lesson itself in addition to the exit tickets, the topic tickets, the module assessments, and the observational assessment. There's a lot of key components to this program that are doing what's best for our students. Um, so while we may not see that progress being translated right now into I Ready, we know that we're making the right gains because we are, um, moving forward with this progress. So I'm going to dive into a little bit of some other data, just to give you some other data points to compare with I Ready. Um, so, uh, as we've gone, um, I'm going to actually focus on, hop to this slide. I'm going to focus on first grade. And just like I tell you with F M P, you know, we have those students that were in the yellow, they're almost there. They're just about right there being at grade level. When digging into this data, um, I've spent more time in data than I think I have in, of the other part, part of my career. But as we were digging into this data, I was really looking at first grade because I know our first graders are doing good things. I've seen them in their classrooms and hearing them talk about the communicative property of first grade, talking about open and closed shapes, um, all these vocabulary words that they're throwing around, the student discourse that unfortunately is not being measured right now. Um, we have students that are talking about math in ways that they've never done before. And I think some of you were able to see some of our math classes when you came in to visit us, um, a couple of weeks ago. So looking at that first grade cohort, there's currently fifteen students, probably within ten points of being considered on grade level. So that's like our next level if I were talking F M P. Those are our students that are like that, just that one level below being on grade level. Um, the perfect example. Um, the perfect example is that currently he have a, I, I was looking at different students. Um, one kiddo comes to mind, first grader, he made approximately, I think it was 35 points of growth in his math scores. And when he looked at the four domains in math, um, he was in the green, so on grade level in three of those subcategories. But he was still in the yellow on one. And when those four categories were average, it still brought him down to a kindergarten level, so in the yellow technically. Except he was green in three quarters of the categories, the domains. So it's things like that that we're looking at and seeing where kiddos, you know, where are we still in progress? Where do we need to keep adding, um, different things in? So we're really digging deep. So I want to show you this next slide. And this is where we're looking at some of the, um, data from Eureka Map Square. As we're getting into Eureka Map Square, there's different components in the assessment, uh, pieces of it. So this is just a snapshot of data from first grade. And so in UPK kindergarten, they have just the observational assessment that our teachers have been doing. So it's looking at lessons as we're instructing and seeing how students are doing in that moment. There's also an opportunity that they can pull students one-on-one and look at standards that they've been teaching to see where that student is. If they're not yet there, if they're partially proficient, proficient and on some standards and achievement descriptors, they can be highly proficient. Not all, but some they can be highly proficient. So in first grade and second grade, they not only do the observational assessment, but they're also doing a written component to this. So as first and second grade's been progressing, they've been doing a tremendous job. Our teachers are working so hard to implement this program and do what's best for kids. So as we've been implementing for kindergarten, um, I'm sorry, first and second grade, the paper-based assessments, we're now getting to the observational component. So we're still working on implementing that and getting that up off the ground in those two grade levels, but they have been giving the paper-based assessments, which is just one snapshot of the assessment component. So looking at this, you'll see that I have those terms that you're going to hear as we go through this Eureka Map Square data as you move on of not yet, partially proficient and being proficient. As we go, this is a spiral-based curriculum. So our, at the end of the year, we want our students to be proficient. It's been building upon all year. And when they get, when we're looking at these written assessments that they've done, you'll notice that our students are partially proficient or proficient on these, these module assessments. Again, one component, it's usually coupled with the observational assessment to make that holistic child, um, snapshot. So we're getting there. But, um, so if you're looking at module one, it was counting comparison and addition. So those were those basic kindergarten skills that they built upon. They didn't really love with that. They were mostly proficient and that was back in the fall. When we go into module two, that was addition and subtraction. And that was one of the, some of the first times that they were subtracting into those higher number sets as we were going. So that one was a little bit trickier because they were doing addition and subtraction. And if you've ever worked with a first grade student, um, that gets a little tricky that you're changing your brain from going to adding to subtracting and having, knowing the differences. So that one was a little bit trickier for our students. But when we got into module three with properties and operations to make easier problems. So it'd be adding three addends or subtracting and looking at ways to make group of 10 and then adding on. So they were really getting some complex thinking in here that you typically wouldn't see at a first grade level. So we know that the work that our students are doing and our teachers is top-notch. Like they're putting in the time and effort to make sure that this is happening. So I don't want you to just look at one number with I ready and think, oh, what was lost? Because it's not, because there's good work going on and we're really working hard towards achieving, um, and having every student be proficient at grade level.
I have a question. Keep bringing up like proficiency at the end of the year and the spiral effect.
Uh huh.
Now, I'm been dealing, I've been, uh, watching my daughter in class. You talk about exit tickets, um, they come, you know, you get your lesson every day, right? Tell me if I'm wrong, you get your lesson every day and at the end of the day, you get your exit ticket. You go home, you do your exit ticket and you get a number out of six or out of 10 or whatever the exit ticket is. And now if they don't get that, now, we have a lot of teachers that put forth the effort to make sure that they get the extra help if they're able to stay after or whatever for that, for whatever set student. But not every student has that ability to do that. So they get their exit ticket, they get their score or three out of five. And they, then the next day, they go on to the next lesson and then they have to go ahead and do the same thing. And they, they fail, they fail, they fail. Like in their brain, they fail, they fail, they fail. How do we, I mean, to me, it seems hard, right? Like if, if any person just keeps getting kicked back at anything, they have a hard time to succeed. If they keep getting knocked down every single day. So it's, it's hard for me to grasp the concept of constantly getting exit tickets for maybe one student, constantly getting knocked down. How do we make them succeed? How do we let them see the success? And this is a question for any, anyone, any three of you. How do we allow them to see the success and give them the time that they need? Because they may grasp the concept on lesson three, but on lesson five, there's not a chance that they're going to get this concept. I mean, that doesn't mean they don't understand how to do algebra or whatever they're working on, but I, I just find it hard. It's hard for me because I mean, I coach, I do a bunch of different things. And sometimes you just have to give a kid a little bit of confidence, throw that pitch on the inside if that's where they need it to be so that they can hit the ball. If you, even if they're struggling getting outside pitch, I mean, that's my analogy. Sometimes I do that just so that they can get that confidence and that boost.
So we're all doing it a little bit differently in each building. So at the elementary school, we have a 30-minute wind block which is dedicated solely to math. So our teachers have been really working hard. They take those exit tickets and they look at that data. And that might be pulling a small group of students that struggled with that exit ticket and working on that skill right then and there. Sometimes they'll look at it and the next morning, if it was, say, the majority of the class was not successful, they might take a small moment of time to dive in and really look and tweak what they did. Maybe give a second dose of that in some capacity. And that's when we start looking at, we're using that, um, form of assessment to look at our tier two and tier three. If this kiddo is continually struggling, we don't want them to be there. We want them to feel successful, just like you said. So is that, that meaning that they need to be picked up for an intervention group? So when we're looking at these, these students, we're looking at all of these data points. The I ready, the Eureka Map Square, the exit tickets. How are they performing across the board and in math and or in ELAs? And how can we use that data to reflect and give them that extra support that they need? Um, that's how we're doing it at elementary school. Um, I've got some really creative teams. We're trying to be, um, flexible. My third grade team is piloting something for me right now. Um, two teachers at once are doing wind time. And so they have our math, um, AIS interventionist as well. So they're sharing students between the three of them. And so that the most media students are being pulled out with our math interventionist. And then the two classroom teachers are pulling students as well so that we've got intervention groups going for all, not just the media.
This is similar to what we, like we did when I was in school where he's kind of, I mean, I remember like math was a big thing that we used to go to whenever we're teaching. We weren't with the students that we were with in our normal everyday classes we were with. Like I had Mr. Bash and I had Mrs. Angie, you know, in fourth grade. Like it's something similar to that.
Yeah, similar, we have, we have, um.
It's more flexible groupings than flood. I can start like flood.
Like you take like the three classes, four classes, and you take 15 kids. It may not be five from this class, 10 from that class, but they go with this teacher or.
So that's what two of the third grade team is piloting right now. We're trying to see if it's going to work the way I'm visioning it in my brain is going to work. Um, I know that some other people, like we've, we've been coming up with ways that we can provide students with more opportunity to receive the support that they need. So I think though, as we move through this, we're going to see our math skills, the foundational level increase. Because we're coming, our three-year-olds are doing math and talking about shapes with straight lines and curved lines at three. And like, it's just building from there. So I think we're laying a solid foundation so that when they get to Tina's building and they're talking about the algebra regions, you know, I'm hoping in six years' time, I'm going to give you some amazing algebra regions from Tina. And we're going to be like, that's because we did this.
I can talk a little bit about we did what we do. Do you like me to do that?
Of course.
Okay. So I'm going to do a little visual for you. I'm a visual learner and a visual person. So.
You got one of those too?
Uh, there we go. Okay. So we go by the 80, the 15, and we go by the five. Okay? So our teachers do exit tickets every 40 minutes of the day, right? At the end of that lesson, they look at those exit tickets. If 80% of my kids got it, green means go, okay? So I know that I don't have to totally stop and move on. I, but I do need to personalize for this 15 and five sometime. But if the 80% or more of my kids did not give what I just taught, the next day I got to stop and figure out a way so that they know how they got it, right? So the 15% is our small group, that's our AIS crew, okay? And then our 5% is generally our student population that requires special education services. And they have learning labs. So the difference between AIS and learning labs, AIS is a general ed teacher, the reading teacher, the math specialist. They go in and work with certain groups of kids, okay? So like Mrs. Fox has a pre-algebra and algebra class. That's the 15% that pre-algebra class, right? So they get the pre-algebra and the algebra so that they can be successful in the reading exam. But general everyday instruction, if 80% or more of my kids got it, great. But if they didn't, I got to find a way within that 40 minutes of class time to make sure that the other kids did get it. And then for those kids that continually struggle, we're looking at AIS for those courses. And then the kids who are at our top 5% that are always struggling constantly, looking at, is it, do they need special education services, more targeted interventions, one-on-one type of, um, instruction, that type of thing. Does that make sense? Okay, so we're constantly teaching and assessing, teaching and assessing and looking for different ways to meet kids. Like we gamify things, we, we do whatever it takes for region.
I'm going to be intermediate school.
Do you want this?
Uh, no, 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 I'm okay. So I'm not going to show you my artistic skills, but, um, we have, uh, every day there are two 40-minute intervention blocks built into our schedule. So that is where those intensive reading and math groups are going to happen as well as like ENL lab, resource room for our students with IEPs. But then that also leaves a smaller group behind with their, um, homeroom or their, their teacher so that that's when they can do those smaller, more individualized groups. So, oh, I noticed from, you know, this topic quiz or I noticed from this exit ticket or from, you know, the assessment that I just gave, that these four students are all struggling with this or these two students are struggling with this. And then they can be grouped together. We talk a lot in ELA and reading about guided reading groups and students being grouped according to what skills and things they need. We do the exact same thing in math. So essentially it's like guided math groups where some students who need that definitely more intense instruction and they might not have as many of those foundational skills as we would expect coming up, they can get those through our intensive math and reading interventionist. But then in the, um, in the classroom, they, the classroom teacher can be running small groups while the other students are working on, um, some other independent type work that will also help with some of those skills that they might need.
The other thing is, if you remember a couple of years ago, we had some of those math intervention positions. And, um, that's something that we've certainly prioritized and we can play with, um, just, just for these purposes.
So.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're good, you're good. It's a good question. Um, so again, this is just a snapshot. And when we start putting this, uh, the written module assessment data together with the observational assessment data, we'll get the really holistic picture of all of our students. And you'll start hearing us using that verbiage of not yet, partially proficient and proficient. Um, and then there's a couple of standards, like I said, that they can be, uh, highly proficient in. As we start looking at the cohort data, um, you know, over the last couple of years at SOTUS, um, we've implemented new programming and I ready has not been as much of a priority as we've implemented things that we know are more, um, that will help our students with their reading and their math, such as Hagerty and Benchmark Phonics in addition to the Eureka Map Square. Um, when we take this data and we look at it coupled with the FMP data from last month, it starts to paint a different picture of our students and where we go from there. And then with our math data, um, one point that I, I didn't, um, get to on my last slide, we're talking about the assessments. I mentioned that UPK in kindergarten had the observational assessment. First grade and second grade have the written assessments and the observational assessment. And then third grade is the first time that they actually start taking the math assessment on the computer. So our third grade team has been amazing and really scaffolded that for our students to get them successful, which then also props them for that first time they do computer-based testing on the computer this spring. Um, what they were able to do is they were able to scaffold that. So the first module assessment they took, they did it paper and then transferred their answers in. And then we've worked them to doing scrap paper and transferring it in. And then we've, we've, they've kept, um, that hurdle help in getting them to that point where when we go to do the CDT's assessment in April and May, they're in a really good spot. They've also been using EdocTrainer, which is amazing, um, and really getting the students on there to make sure they feel successful and they feel assured when they get onto that test for the first time for the state assessment that they're in a good spot. So that's been really great. And I think the only other thing I want to say on this is that while, um, as I said, that Eureka Map Square is a spiral curriculum and students revisit topics over and over again. So right now, it's okay if a kiddo is partially proficient in a standard or an achievement descriptor because the goal is for them to hit it by the end of the year. Whereas for some other things that it's just measuring what they know at this point in time. So there could be some discrepancy there as well. So next steps for us, um, we've dived, like I said, so deeply in this data, um, but we're going to continue the implementation of best practices in the science of reading in Eureka Map Square. Um, you know, we've got really excited teens about, um, the next steps for science of reading, um, and how we can increase that professional development. We use our data-driven reflection with our data days. We meet, um, weekly as an MTSS tier two and tier three team and rotate through, um, behavior and attendance, math, reading, um, and all those each week to make sure that we're really making sure that we're looking at individualized students to make sure they're creating what they're, they're needing. Um, you know, we're working on multiple opportunities to apply skills, um, for this data assessment and that's starting from a young age all the way up so that rigor is there. Um, and that's what a lot of our teachers in, um, first and second and third grade have said, like the rigor with this new math program is huge. Our kiddos are seeing things that are comparable to the state test, so they won't be blindsided by it. And, um, you know, we're going to start, uh, using I ready as more of like, using it to assign targeted lessons when we know that there's an area of need, um, as a public fifth grade teachers. Figurative language is always tricky, so I purposely assign more figurative language lessons for my students. And I have a couple of teachers that are working on that and getting that up and running. Questions? Because that's a very long presentation for everyone.
Kind of a big picture question. Uh, so it looks like almost across the board, like there's progress being made, like during the schooling. Like there's, there's more of the proficient class that are way behind. It's, I, I don't want my question to come across as like it's discouraging, but I, I feel like I've also seen that some other ways. And so I, I wonder sometimes like why it doesn't seem like, um, like one year is building off another and like the, the district in general. It doesn't seem like we're getting much better at mathematics. So like is it, have we identified many factors like why that is? Is it just on the slide or is there, um, other things that seem to do like more progress?
I think some of it, Brian, is, is, is the measures that we look, if you look at. We, we actually talked about that in our administrative meeting before this. And when you, when you look at, for instance, the mathematics state assessment results, you know, for three through eight, if you're, you know, we, we presented that back in the fall. You know, SOTUS actually did quite well comparatively in, in the region on that. Um, when you look at, at some of the other indicators, you're right, you know, we make progress the next year. We start off, we make progress. And it's, it, some of what, what we've been trying to figure out, for instance, is we've talked a lot about the difference between, if you look at our Eureka Map Square assessment, module assessment results, they are looking outstanding. If now, if you look at I ready, they don't look so outstanding, right? So you've got, you've got two different comparative measures that you're looking at. And one of the things that we were finding is that what I ready is assessing. And one of the things that we were finding is that what I-Ready is assessing and what Eureka Math Squared are assessing, they're not assessing the same thing at the same time. So, you know, Eureka Math Squared might be, you might be hitting this one component, say, in December and January, and I-Ready, you know, they might, they might have expected that at another, another point in time. So that's one of the things that we're, we're trying to figure out is, is the connection and the alignment between all of the data sets that we get. I mean ironically, if you look at some of our state assessments results, typically, these local measures will look better than the state assessment results. For us, the state assessment results look better than our local measures for, for last spring. Figure that out. It doesn't, sometimes there's just no rhyme or reason to it. You know, so that's one of the things that, I think the big piece is, is looking at the individual students. And like Jackie was saying, we're continuing to make progress and make goals. But I wish I had a great answer to that question, but the measures that we're looking at sometimes do differ and the caveats make it hard to pound down.
So when you talk about different measures, different assessments, I always, I mean, I have a, I have a trust issue when it comes to computer diagnostics. I feel like it's this year, next year, the year after. Are they really the same, is it really the same assessment every single year for the same?
It's not.
Age group, so, like, are they changing the assessment?
They are.
From year to year?
They are.
The old-school way of, piece of paper, the assessment, they're going back and taking the old regions exam or taking, like, I'm giving out for the last ten years, I can really see if I'm falling off, if this age group's falling off, or if they're still on course with what we've been doing. And I'm not saying we gotta go back to an old paper. I mean, maybe, I don't know. I, I just don't fully trust that computer assessment to always be in line with what we've been teaching. Like, I feel like they're playing a cat and mouse game with you, like, trying to drag you around, like, knocking your back. I don't know, I just...
And right now, you know, the three-through-eight tests are, are moving to that computer-based testing piece, so we don't have a choice. Right now, I mean, your, your regions exams are still paper-based. I'm not sure when that's gonna transition over. But it does, it does change the game a little bit, you know, for, for kids having to adjust to that.
It makes it really hard to go back and see what's working for one and not working for the other. When you correct the test and you're right there in front of your face, it's a lot easier to go back. Now, I, I know we're bound to a lot of the state. If I had the answer, I'd give it to you, I don't know.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Yeah, so, move on to information. You guys will be on the meeting if you look at that in any sections. And we do go on to public participation. Thank you. And thank you all, I'm sorry, I know it was...
It's funny, people say...
But, thank you. Okay. Public participation. Carolyn Campell will come up and talk about culture. I will, yeah, you can step up and then I'll go over the rules.
All right, you can.
You want me to go, okay, I'll go over as a whole, I'll just read through it, it's been a while. So I'll go through the whole thing. So, we have a list of, those wishing to address the public shall under their name on the sheet. They do that. Speakers may use the public participation period to express their viewpoints to the board. If you wish to address the board on a matter not listed on agenda, the board reserves the right to hold comma until the next scheduled meeting. Okay, your presentation should be as brief as possible and all more than four minutes. You sign up for the first public session forum, and you didn't get the opportunity to speak, but you all get the opportunity to speak, then you would be moved to the second, that won't be an issue. All speakers must conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, limiting statements, threats, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice and shouting will not be tolerated. To protect the privacy of individual students or statements concerning personnel or confidential student matters are prohibited. During the public forum, the president of the board will not reply to comments or questions asked by members of the public. The president shall direct members of the public with specific personal complaints to the district's policy regarding public complaints. The president shall rule a speaker out of order if a speaker exceeds the time or acts in an uncivil manner or uses inappropriate language. The president shall discontinue a public forum when the last speaker's time is completed. So, I think we're good.
All right.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, sorry that I have to lay back towards y'all, but that's the way they set it up. So, my name's Carolyn Campell, high school science teacher here at SOTUS.
You're more than welcome to stand over here if you'd like, there's no microphone, so it's not gonna change. If you would like to stand, or if it would make it better for you, you're more... You're speaking to us, but you're more than welcome if you feel like you're back to the...
Yeah, I don't really want my back towards the microphone. So I typed up what I'm gonna say, I don't know if I'm gonna stay on it. Carolyn Campell, science teacher. I'm here tonight to share my side of an investigation that took place a few weeks ago. The investigation was based on something that I said in my classroom to my students. Unfortunately, during this investigation, I was never asked any questions, nor did anyone inquire about why I said or what I said. So I'm here tonight so my voice can be heard. I have a period, five-sixths. It's a spunky group of kids, I enjoyed it a great deal. We have a lot of lively conversation, it's a very active class. This class does, however, like to push the bar a little bit when it comes to discipline issues. One of the biggest problems that I had in that classroom is language, foul language, more specifically. I've tried to deal with this, I've been a teacher for twenty-five years. I've used everything in my bag of traps, talking privately with students, standing in front of the class saying, please, don't use that language, writing referrals, calling parents, sitting with administrators, having discussions with them, having parent conferences, all of which were canceled at the last minute. So, I've obviously gone through the whole chain of command when it comes to this. So, one day, I'm sitting in my class, probably about four weeks ago, and my kids were doing group work, having conversation amongst themselves. And in a very short time, I heard the N-word multiple times. Now, I'm offended by it. I was tired of it. I stood up and I said, I do not wanna hear the N-word again. The kids looked at me like I had two heads, they were shocked. And I said to them, are you absolutely shocked that I said the N-word? Because you say it every day, multiple times in this class. I said, what if I use this word in casual conversation every day like you do? What if when you came into my class, I said, hey, Ben, turn in your homework? You would feel belittled and you would be upset. And I said, and I hope that when you go home and you tell your parents that your teacher said this in class, I hope they call and I hope they're upset. And I hope that I can tell them that your child says that word every day in school with no consequences. So, I said that, I said the word four times. I sat down, class continued. The next day, an administrator came up to my room explaining to me that it's highly inappropriate to use that language in class. I agree a hundred percent. But you know what that administrator told me? That administrator told me that this is the culture. This is the culture of our school. This is what the kids do, and we should accept it. And I was floored. I thought to myself, and I said to the administrator, wait a minute, we're a school. Our culture should be education. Our culture should be teaching these kids how to grow up, be productive, have a job, contribute to society. That's the only culture that we need to worry about. And if we're not doing that, we are failing our children every day. Sorry. Every day, in our school. So I'm shocked. So, I've been in SOTUS now about fifteen years. Many of y'all have been here a lot longer, graduates, SOTUS graduates. We have students in the school. Is this really the culture that we're expected to hear in SOTUS? Is this the culture that we are going to accept? It's not the culture that I believe in, and it's not the culture that I grew up with, and it's not the culture that I'm allowing in my classroom. I am not proud about what I did. I am not proud that I said those words. But somebody had to. If we continue to turn our back on these uncomfortable problems that we have in our schools, they will just continue and continue and continue. I am not willing to accept that. My son is a graduate from SOTUS, and I have higher expectations from that. I don't think any one of you would want somebody to come to you and talk to you like that. Well, I hear it every day. F-bombs, N-words, B-words, every day. You tell me, after twenty-five years of teaching, what am I supposed to do? I went through the channels, I wrote the referrals, I called the parents, I went to the administration, and I was told it was the culture? That's disgusting. And I'm sorry. Every day since then, I have been demonized. There have been posts on Facebook calling me a racist and a whole lot worse. And you know what? I'm not gonna waste my time on that, because those people are posting lies. Because never, not once, did I call a student that name, a group of students. I didn't say it out of malice, I didn't say it out of hate. I said it because I'm concerned about the culture of our students. I'm concerned about what these kids are gonna do when they grow up, when they're allowed to talk like this every day in school, and then they go out and they try to get a job. And they've been allowed to do this for twelve years in SOTUS Central School, and then they go out and they try to get a job. And they use this language, and then they get fired. We are not doing our jobs if we continue to turn our back on these problems. This is out of freaking control.
Karen, not, not later, I'm sorry. But your time is up, and if we allow you to continue, then we have violated the rules, and we got to allow everybody to continue.
All right.
There is another session, if you wanna stay and sign up for the second session, you can continue with what you said.
So in conclusion, if that is true, if this is the culture of our school, if this is what we're gonna allow in my school, I don't want any part of it. Y'all see with that information what you will, but I'm not gonna walk around town every day wondering, did they hear the truth? Because now I know you heard the truth. And I don't have to worry.
Let's go.
Y'all have a nice night. I'll see you Sunday.
So I wanna share some observations about this. I wanna make clear that identifying a word by speaking it is not using the word to describe anyone. The word is being, the word was being heard, and it was offensive to the teacher. The word was being used among students, you already know that, you heard that from her, had been for a long period of time. She was identifying the word that she wanted to stop hearing. Remember, the teacher was the one who was offended by the use of this word initially. Didn't seem to be any problem with the students hearing that, using it. And yet this was somehow twisted around to be about her offending the students. An anti-disciplinary action is taken against her. Why is it acceptable for her to be offended every school day? Why, why doesn't seem the teacher is expected to just endure this day after day? And a student or parent cannot justify being offended for the mere identification of a word. And the administration and the union should come to the defense in this case.
Rob?
Yeah.
And I, and I won't take this against, but just make sure that whatever you're talking, if you wanna give me something directed towards the use of whatever you wanna do, but directly talking about the personnel matter or an ongoing investigation or whatever's going on, really, if that, I don't, am I wrong? Is that, I believe, I mean, if we read what's going on here, I mean, she's talking about herself, but for you to talk about...
She has made that public, it's no longer a private matter.
It's still a personnel matter, and right here, directly in our rules, it spells out that you're not to do that, and I'm asking you nicely not to do that.
When you serve in a public position in a public school, and the community has a right to address our grievances in public, that's a right of the citizens to address our grievances in a public setting. This is the public setting where we address our grievances.
As long as you're not talking about the specific situation, I'll be all right with it, bud.
When you signed your name on there, you read the rules, and it says, no, I'm talking about personnel.
I didn't sign my name, I signed...
Put your name down, and you volunteered to speak. So, just letting you know. I'll put the time back in, you got ten more seconds in addition to what's on there.
The administration should come to the defense of somebody accused of false manner. The snacks of identity politics, different rules and standards for different people based on physical characteristics that are not under the control of any people involved. Unfortunately, identity politics seems to have become the norm here. This had a potential to be instructive, and it was tossed away by how it became perpetuating the problem, sets students up for failure. There seems to have been a concerted effort to, or there is concerted efforts to silence people in situations like this. And I wonder how that seems to fit in with the oath of office that's taken to support the Constitution and the First Amendment. I'm not sure what's trying to be hidden, what, I mean, why don't we wanna get to the truth? Why, why shouldn't we hear all sides of stories? I don't know if there's a personal axe to grind in cases, I don't know. Things don't look good from the outside. And I don't like how our teachers are treated. I'm not sure where the teachers' union is on this. I thought they were supposed to defend their teachers. I think the teachers should take notice, and I think many employees in the school have taken notice, because there seems to be a steady stream of people leaving this school. Members of the board, I do not feel superintendent's response to the situation was fair or appropriate, and his response had serious implications for the livelihood of this teacher in the twilight of her career, and I believe this was treated in a cavalier fashion, in my opinion. Joe Young?
I'm Joe Young, and I'm a concerned citizen. I sat and I listened to the teacher and the principal, thank you, and it brought forth some big concerns. When I was in grade school, going into junior high, there was a lot of prepping work. And back then, we were taught history, because that's important to know. And I had a great deal of reading problems, I suffered from a learning disability. How the teachers got around that was study hall and after-school tutoring, one-on-one. So, they worked with me, and this was a public school in the city of Milwaukee. It was a big school, big staff, big student load. And I can tell you that students were not allowed to take extracurricular activities until they completed a certain grade level. So, if kindergarten and third grade are the best these students are doing, there's a problem. The fact that it's been happening, that they're two to three grades behind in comprehension, year after year after year, that's a problem. If it's not working the way it's being done, then we ought to go back to the basics of writing, reading, math, science, and history, or social studies. However, if that's not done, the kids will let me just... However, if that's not done, the kids, well, let me just put it this way, out there in the world, it is being known as the dumbing down of America, what is being taught in schools today. I don't necessarily agree with that, but I do see some very disturbing statistics. And things like 10% of the kids, or 10 kids, missing and not being really aware of what's going on with them, do we not have truancy officers still? Or do they just make a phone call? Follow-up is everything when it comes to young kids and teenagers. And I really feel that this is being left behind. Swearing, D E I, culture maligning words. I don't care if you're white, black, Hispanic, Chinese, to say culture maligning words and for it to be allowed by the students, for the students to actually be allowed to speak it, because part of their culture is incorrect. Because we are supposed to be learning how to get together as a world, as a community, as a culture, not separate cultures, learning to hate each other because of what they say and do. And that, to me, is just unacceptable, that that's being allowed. And I think that doing the basics of education, expecting results, put a fire under these kids' feet. Parents, I understand, are not following through on children's homework at night. That has been a problem for ages, even when I was in school. So what happened then? The students stayed after school to do their homework. Or they went to study hall where it was supervised. Or they went to a library and sat with a tutor until their work was done. Because we are failing our children, and do you want them to be known as the culture that, or as the dumbing down of America culture, or the dumbing down of America generation? Well, I do not. My kids are grown, and they have their education, but they also had access to apprenticeships, not just go to college, that'll be better. It was apprenticeship programs at the high school level. And it saved my son from having to spend thousands and thousands of dollars on school, because he took welding. And the welding course was so good, and he did so well at it, that it paid for, the high school paid for the first year of his college. And he went to the school two years to complete welding, so that he was the best.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but you're...
Well, that's all I wanted to say, anyway.
No, that's it. It's on the second session. Okay, we will move on to consensus motion number one.
I can't hear Vic here.
Sorry, Kelly, motion approved. Kelly, sorry, I apologize.
Second.
Jeff second, all favor.
We will support the consensus motion number two. A motion to approve, Tony. About second?
Second.
All favor? Second, public participation.
I do consensus motion number three. And in past meetings, we have withdrawn, banning numbers and drawn the motions apart to try to pull them, and we've done some research on this, and we've found that we don't, it's not necessarily needed. So we're going to go ahead and leave motion and banning numbers. 14.2 for me, and 14, or 14.2 for me, and 14.8, and 14.2 for Jeff.
Your wife and his father.
Okay, okay. Just for the opposite, just so people understand. Do I have a motion to approve consensus motion number three? Tony, motion, Brian second, all favor?
I just wanted to just take a quick moment to introduce somebody that's here with us tonight. As you know, we just approved Rihanna Mullen as our new director of innovative technology. And I want to introduce her to the board and to the public right now. Rihanna, come on up. Look, she's even got a purple bow, man. She's already...
Love it.
So, you know, we really got very, very lucky, you know, with Tim leaving, you know, for a wonderful position closer to his home. You know, we were quite nervous, you know, about being able to fill this position with a body candidate, and we struggled. You know, Rihanna is a longtime foreign language teacher, meditated administrator for a number of years, currently serves as assistant principal of the Southern Falls School District. And, you know, I know her superintendent pretty well. I had a chance to talk with her. And, you know, she just speaks so highly of Rihanna and said, you know, this position is for individuals. She knows instruction well. She knows technology. She's, you know, she's bright, she's personable, and, you know, we're just really, really looking forward to having you with us. She's gonna start in a couple of weeks. And, you know, it gives me pleasure to introduce Rihanna to you, and we wanted to give you your first Spartan squad, okay? So congratulations.
I just wanted to quickly say thank you so much. I'm thrilled to be joining the Spartan family. I can't wait to start. I was really lucky to spend some time with Tim and get kind of the lay of the land, meet some people, so I am excited to get started and can't wait so much.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, so the next agenda, we're actually going to do a presentation on some of our early literacy initiatives, Benchmark Phonics, Haggerty. You know, so we're really gonna share some of the intensive literacy work that's happening in the elementary schools. So that will be the bulk of our instructional presentation.
Any student pieces?
Yeah, there'll be a student piece as well.
We're doing our literacy events, so we've done Read Across America, it's this month. So we've got several literacy events that we're doing throughout the month, so we're gonna record them.
So we're gonna tie that way.
More facts to that side, my favorite part.
Oh, absolutely.
Exactly.
Consensus, have a motion to approve consensus motion number four, where we'll go into an anticipated executive session.
You need to...
To discuss a matter leading to disciplines, discussion, removal, or put together person. Do you have a motion to approve? Sorry, Sarah. Second, Kelly, all favor? Close.
What's that mean, get out? Oh, okay. Pardon me. Oh, okay, I didn't... Sorry.